Please stand to salute the nation's flag. In attendance this evening are supervisors Fisher, Agizio, Cassiola, Fleer, and Barney. In addition, Don Genuso Township Manager, Jack King Assistant Township Manager and Director of Planning, Director of Public Works, I'm sorry, Bill Baldorf Director of Public Works, Engineer Dan Dizeroth of Gateway Engineers, and Attorney Alexis, I'm sorry, Jocelyn Wheeler. Sorry, Wheeler of, replacing Gretchen Moore. Citizens comments, comments will be taken at this time for any item to be voted on by the board that appears on the agenda. General Township comments or questions will be addressed before the close of the meeting. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Moving on. Jordan Tax Service will be at the Municipal Building on Friday, July 7th from 1:00 to 4:00 to collect this year's school tax. Additional dates and times are Friday, September 22nd from 9:00 to noon, Wednesday, September 27th from 9:00 to noon, and Friday, September 29th from 1:00 to 4:00. The Cecil Township Historical Society will hold their monthly meeting on Wednesday, July 19th at 7:00 PM in the meeting room. The Cecil Township Parks and Recreation Board will sponsor Cecil Community Day in Cecil Park on Saturday, July 22nd from 11:00 to 3:00. There will be a water slide, a cornhole tournament, a water balloon toss, egg relay, three-legged race, pie baking contest, plus more. Also DJ Matt Wiley, Beatles Ice Cream, and Children's Entrepreneur Market Pennsylvania. Concession Stand will be operated by Billy Ann's Diner, wow yum. The concession stand and the children's market are cash only. There is something for everyone at the Second Annual Cecil Township Community Day. If you can attend, I highly recommend that. Discussion items, the first one is an update on the public works facility.
Members of the board, you're in receipt of our latest Public Works voting construction report. Just to update the board, all's, the general contractor and the subcontractors are all working at, on the site. Bill actually just reported me to me tonight that there may be possibly erecting the building in the next week or so. So things are going along well. On the agenda tonight, there are some payments that are recommended for plumbing, to general construction, and to the electrical contractor. And all of those have been verified by our office and by Bill and are ready for construction. Actually, the next upcoming tasks, we again, complete to work, to work on the Masonry Foundation installation, and then the slab, and then they'll begin to erect the building. Site utilities continue to take place. PA American is to mobilize at any time. West Ben Power has to do their three-phase installation, and there's some restoration work for the sanitary sewer connection. That's pretty much the report, unless there's any questions.
Any questions by the board?
And Dan. Can we get Stewart to get up there and maybe mill that road a little bit? It's so rough where he patched it.
I can find out, yes.
Okay.
Sure.
If there's no other questions by the board, Dan, you can move on to number two.
Yeah, the second item to report on, and Joe's here with me tonight, he put the DePauli Road project out for bid. We had 11 people pick up contract documents, but actually no bids were received. We've been seeing a trend for this recently in some later bidding in the season. I think it's a combination of things, just less contractors out there after COVID. Everybody is kind of filled up with their work. There's a lot of utility restoration work going on right now. And just in general, people are having trouble getting bids in. We're continuing to evaluate that, and I would say we need to pick the right time to go back out for bids. And Joe, any first thoughts on that?
I did contact some of the contractors who had the bidding documents after we opened bids. One person had told me, gentleman who did the work on Pullman Road, he was putting his bid together and he thought the bid was due on Thursday. Wednesday apologized, but he said if we put it back out to bid, he'd definitely be interested in bidding. Another contractor told me that he had sent the stuff to, have it printed out, about to get it printed out. But like Dan said, there was 11 contractors who had the bidding documents. I did contact some of them. They told me they weren't interested. Hooked up. Deadlines, but the deadline wasn't all that unreasonable, done by August 31st.
Could we extend the deadline?
Well, we put it back out to bid. You know, we've already advertised it. No bids were received. Probably need to re-advertise it and have a longer completion.
Yeah, because are, I mean, are we in a rush to have it done by August 31st?
I would say just to the end of the construction season.
Yeah, I'd say if we could probably get it done by, you know, December 1st, that would be great.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. You don't think so, Ron? You don't think December 1st, or?
I think I ought to put it out to bid in two weeks. You know you have people that want to get a bid in.
Right. Yeah, well, I mean, we'll get bids back in. The question is to extend the date for them to finish it.
Oh.
That was the question.
Yeah, I don't think it matters when this construction season, season it gets done, as long as it gets done this year.
But then that, that means we're not going to get it paved then, if we extend it till December 1st?
Well, we still have some things to work out logistically in terms of the pavement.
Right.
The idea was to get this first part done.
Get the first part done and we still wait a bit. We're going to come through all this.
Yeah.
Other thing, Bill, I know our guys are busy, but I know they have the capabilities to do that. Could we do that in-house?
What, the wall?
Yeah.
No, that's too much. I can't tell my guys that much. We can do it, I just don't have, I don't have the time to do it. I don't have, you know, they're on that, they're not on other stuff.
Right. Let's just put it back out to bid and extend it to the end of the construction season and see what comes in that way.
I'd do that.
Okay, thank you.
So we need a formal authorization?
I don't think so, because we're bidding out the same thing.
They'll authorize it, it's just a rebid.
I'm sorry?
It's a rebid.
It's a rebid, we're just extending the date, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but when you want the bids in? Two weeks?
Yeah. We'll get the bids back in the next two weeks.
In two weeks.
I guess my question is, we still have to follow the municipal advertising requirements since we're going to rebid it.
Yes, yes.
We have to.
Yeah.
I think, Ron, essentially just so that it's ready for the board's consideration at their next August meeting, that's, that's really, you know, so whether it's two weeks or a month, or a month, you just want those documents to be able to be reviewed by Gateway in order for you guys to, for the board to make their, have their consideration.
Make it work.
Makes sense.
Okay, and then the third item.
The third item, Dawn received a request from 228 Railroad Street, which is right here located on my cursor here in front of you. This is 980 over here for reference. These are two remote lots that are on lot systems. The property owner, Mr. Thornton, has made a request to connect into the McDonald sewer system. I don't think our municipal authority has any chance of servicing this area anytime in the near future. We've had at least one other resident that has made this same request. So it'd be my recommendation that they, they be allowed to tap into the McDonald system pending any other approvals that are required, either from the borough or from DUP. So if the board agrees with that, I gave Cindy an agenda item that you could consider later on in the meeting if you wanted to consider that. Dan, besides the Midway Authority, who else would care about it other than us authorizing it? Nobody, just be, but I think they just, they just want, I think what kind of what, because if it goes into McDonald's system, I think McDonald goes into Alka-Sen. So the last time we talked about this, the DUP was okay with switching counties, and you know how that gets complicated. So for one house, they were okay with it, so I think as long as we qualify, that the township's okay with it pending any other approvals that are required.
I was going to say, the Thorntons are here. I spoke with Ms., do you have anything you can add, ma'am?
I would just ask, sorry.
I would just ask that you step to the microphone, just because we are recording it. Thank you. Just tell us your name and address.
So my name's Tim Thornton. I live at 228 Railroad Street. I just have like, just a couple documents here. One from the Washington County Sewage Council. I have the letter, just going to just read it here because I know it'll take up all your time. So to whom it may concern, the property at the above-mentioned address has been made a repair application with the Sewage County Council with Jay Michael Baron and Sewage Enforcement Officer. They did a testing on the site for the replacement of sewage system. They found that there was inadequate soil depth for any system, be it conventional or alternative. Thus, Mr. Thornton's only solution to his sewage problem is a holding tank. As we all know, by the DUP standards, this is a means of a last resort, and it's a drain monetarily on the homeowner. If public sewage was extended to this property, not only would it alleviate a sewage problem, but would also increase the value of the property. And this is from RC Cassidy Operations Administrator from Washington.
Did they break your sewer line putting a ditch through there?
What's that?
Did they break your sewer line or your septic system running that ditch up through there?
I'm not sure when, when it was, but it's underneath the road, it's broken. I'm not sure at what time it was, it was broken, but, so to put in a new septic system.
What chances is yours if you're standing down a road? Is it going on the right or the left?
What, can you say that again?
Standing down on 980, if you look up there, there's two houses, right?
So I'm off on Railroad Street, so off of Johnson Street. So you're coming down 980, and where the, do you know where the old Dollar General is?
Yeah.
Okay, so before the old Dollar General, there's a Johnson Street, and then you make a left on the Railroad Street, and it's down on Railroad Street Extension. There's about four houses down there.
Is McDonald willing to let you tie into their sewer system?
Yes, yes.
That's what you're going to do? So you're going to tie into a public sewer?
Which would be better for you overall? Yeah, that'd be better for you overall anyways.
Yeah, to be in sewage.
Yeah, I mean, I, does the board have any problem with it being on the agenda? Okay, so what we'll do is, I have the agenda item, so when we get to the end of the items that are already on the agenda, we'll take two votes. One, to add your item to the agenda, that's just part of the requirements of the state law. And then we'll take a second vote to essentially give you permission, and then we'll work with McDonald Borough to, what they need from us to grant you permission to tie to their system. Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
No problem. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, Dan, so I'll bring that up at the end of the agenda. Thank you. Moving on to resolutions, 111, 2023, Consider Application 2023-0018 for the Newbell Construction, oh my word, how do you say that last name? Stan.
Newbell.
No.
Stankowitz.
Stankowitz Plan, thank you. Land Development, applicant Newbell Construction, location Lot 2 on Progress Lane, C1, General Commercial Zoning District. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this plan on June 15th, 2023.
Yes, so this is the, this is the Valley Tire site. This is the existing Valley Tire building. They're proposing to construct a new 33,000 square foot building next to Valley Tire. This has been reviewed by the Planning Commission. They've met the requirements for parking, lighting, landscaping, stormwater management, and all those things. So the plan is in order for your approval. Just contingent upon addressing some of the administrative items. They still need a developer's agreement and all the other things that we'll do, but the recommendation is to approve the plan as submitted.
Do I have a motion by the board?
I'll make a motion.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five zero. 112, 2023, or, yeah, 2023, Consider Setting a Public Hearing for Application 2023-0014 for the Conditional Use Application for the Toward Property, A Cluster of Homes Land Development. The Planning Commission recommended approval on this plan on June 15th, 2023.
Yes, so this is the potential Ryan Cluster Development located up off of Profio and King Roads. It's been through the Planning Commission a few times, and the plan is now ready to come to the board. This is just to set the public hearing. There's no presentation tonight. This is just a requirement of the ordinance for cluster homes to do a public hearing.
Do you, can we, do you want to do it at 6 o'clock prior to our August meeting? Does that work for everyone?
I guess that depends on, we haven't seen even a rough site plan yet. Does it meet the normal configurations to fit a cluster development?
Yes, it does. Yeah, we actually work with them to make it fit the cluster, classic cluster, which is no back-to-back lots to each other. It has two entrances and exits, one on King, one on Profio. I think it, it looks sim, much more similar to a Timber Run as opposed to a Silver Creek.
So we could set that hearing for 6:00 PM, Monday, August 7th, which is our meeting. Okay. 6:00 PM, August 7th. Okay. So we don't actually need to take a vote on that because we're just setting that hearing. 113, 2023, Consider Setting a Public Hearing for Proposed Zoning Amendments on August 14th, 2023 at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Well, do we actually need to take a public, I mean, I guess we can, but we're really just agreeing to that date and time. Which we've already done. So we don't need to take a vote on that one either. So there'll be a public hearing for the proposed zoning amendments on August 14th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. 114, 2023, Consider Application for Payment Number One for the Work Completed to Date for the Wingcrest Storm Sewer Project in the Amount of $118,644.55 to Morgan Excavating.
Yeah, this is the recommendation for payment from our office. This is just a progress payment. The work is complete. We're just working through punch list items with the contractor now. It appears that we're going to come in under budget for the project. And there's, with this estimate, there's approximately $10,000 to complete the project. So our recommendation is to pay the current estimate in the amount of $118,644.55.
Do I have a motion?
Dan, are they on the paving?
No, they took care of the trench and pave, Ron, and we probably included in our 23 road program to have done by the laundry service.
So you're going to have Youngblood do it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's been moved, has it been seconded?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pass is five zero. 115, 2023, Consider Application for Payment Number Two for the Work Completed to Date for the Cecil Township Public Works Facility Electrical Project in the Amount of $4,230 to SE Schultz Electric.
I'll make a motion.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is four one. 116, 2023, Consider Application for Payment Number Four for the Work Completed to Date for the Cecil Township Public Works Facility General Construction Project in the Amount of $165,379.90 to UHL Construction Company, Inc.
I'll make a motion.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is four one. 117, 2023, Consider Application for Payment Number One for the Work Completed to Date for the Cecil Township Public Works Facility Plumbing Project in the Amount of $117,990 to First American Industries.
I'll make a motion.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Darlene, do you say no? Four one. 118, 2023, Consider Extending the Agreement with CMYSA for the Use at Klinger Field. This would be for the fall season, so this would be through October 2023. It's the exact same agreement that we have had for now the past four, four seasons, right? Four seasons with them.
Okay, what was that agreement?
It's, it's a long legal agreement. It's the exact same thing. I can, I can get you a copy, or Don can get you a copy. It literally just breaks out the days, which their days are, Monday, no. Tuesday, or Wednesday, Thursday? Yeah, Wednesday, Thursday, Sa, I forget. I can get you the agreement. It's the exact same thing. They'll be responsible for the same maintenance things. They do the line striping, the porta-potties. It's, it's the exact same thing we've had for the past four seasons.
Are we getting paid for that?
Not.
Through the, can I make a million?
Not in cash, but in, in kind, I don't say donations, in kind services. So they pay for the porta-potties that stay up there, and they do the line striping weekly for us. They do, there's things spelled out in the agreement that they are responsible for, for their, their time. Not to mention it's the kids in our own community. So we're providing a service to the kids in our community.
Okay, so in other words, we pick up all the expenses as far as Fairfield with all the weed control and mowing the grass and all of this.
Not all of it, because we get money from our, the days that we have it. Opposite them, we get rental fees. So we have an agreement for, we, we had an agreement in the spring season for beadling, which they're actually still using it because a lot of their teams are in playoffs for the use, the days they use it. So the rental income that we get on the days that the soccer association isn't using it, the, we rent it out and that pays for. In fact, the spring cost, I actually just got, Dawn and I actually just got an email from Fairfield today with the updated. So the spring cost for the Fairfield was $3,135. When Dawn and I looked at, when was it, beginning of June, Dawn? What, the rental income, the rental income was at like $4,500 at that point. So the $4,500 has, had already exceeded the cost for weed.
When did $4,500 come in?
We, we tally it at the end. Instead of getting multiple checks throughout the season where it gets confusing, we just keep a spreadsheet of the days that they use it, and then at, when they're done, we send them an invoice, which they've been good about paying, and they just pay us one lump sum check. It's easier to keep track of that way.
Okay, so I have, I have three, three bills here from Fairfield, but they're dated 228, 2022. I never, I haven't seen a 2023 contract. Of course, Dawn.
We just got.
Was trying to, trying to get it for me. He couldn't locate the 2023 contract, right, Dawn?
Yeah.
Yeah, Dawn.
Yeah, we just got it today. Dawn was out of the office. He sent it at 12:06 today. He sent the spring one, which we've already paid, which is the $3,100. It's the same thing broken up over three times. The spring one is $3,135. It's not really a contract. It just says bills for services completed, and it lists six things. And then, I actually had just talked to Frank about this. We have a summer one because he's asking permission to do a treatment July 5th, which we either have to decide tonight to grant him to do, which that would be another $3,135. And then when fall comes, we'll do the same thing. So it's broken up into three payments.
Okay, so it's broke up in three payments to Fairfield, because that's what I have here, three payments.
Yeah, it's the same as last year, except the cost, the cost last year was more expensive than the cost this year. Last year, we were tied in, because remember, we broke the agreement with Canamac Soccer Association. So we were tied into what they had agreed to, which was a little over $11,000. When they tried to get us to pay that, Fairfield tried to get us to pay that again this year. I pushed back and I said, we're not paying $11,000. What can we reduce, or what can we change to bring that in lower? And then bill ended up being like a little over $9,000 when, when it was all said and done. But we agreed to, in April, I think it was in April, to approve up to $6,000. We only ended up needing $3,100. Then tonight, we'll, we'll approve paying this other $3,100 for the summer. And then in the fall, we'll need to do the same thing, agree to pay.
All said and done, by the end of the year, it's going to be over $9,000 payment to.
Yeah, so it's broken up, I can tell you, it's broken, it's $31,000, I'm sorry, not $31,000, $3,135. At times three, so it'll, it's $9,405.
Right. Okay, now, the other question I had was, and Dan, I mean, Dawn, he was going to try and find that out as far as the fertilizer and weed control. There's crabgrass control and there's weed control. Wonder what product they're using for the weed control and the crabgrass control?
I asked, I mean, are you asking, is it safe?
Yes.
So I asked that question, and I have it in writing from them that it is, here, I can, let me see if I can find it. That it is safe. I asked the same question, Darlene. Hold on. Bear with me one second. When we were initially talking to them, that was a question I had.
I think you know what our concerns are as far as these kids playing on these fields with weed control.
I had the same concern. Bear with me one second. I'll have to, I'll find it and send it to you, but I do have from Ryan. But last year, I actually just found, last year's bill total was $11,427.50.
Yes.
This year, it's going to be $9,405, because we eliminated, after the question, we eliminated insecticide use and fall army worm treatments, whatever, surface feeding insects control. So that's what was eliminated in order to, one, reduce the cost and make sure that it's safe for the kids.
And do you feel that we'll get reimbursed from?
Yes.
Everything with.
Yes, and I actually.
Renting it out?
Yes, and I actually need to talk to you guys hopefully in August, knock on wood. I have a very promising partnership potential that would be great, I, I think, for Cecil Township. Will definitely be covered for spring, but there's the potential for a pretty big deal to finish out that full park the way that it was originally intended to be finished. I just need another week or so to form, to finalize that agreement, or to work on that agreement. But yes, I am very confident that if we continue to have the rentals that we've had, in fact, I had, Jack's not out here, is he? I had another organization reach out about using it. Canamac Lacrosse had asked about using it during the times that it wasn't being tied up by the soccer association and by beadling. So there's definitely interest now that it's being maintained and run by the township for rental opportunities, and we're going to, you know, as much as possible, rent it out. We don't want to take it away, I want to be clear though, because this has been something that's come back. Our intent is not to take it away from the soccer association. They get first right to use it. Not per the contract, but just because that's the right thing to do. And we have a great relationship right now with their current president, Tom Irwin. He's super easy to work with, and we really do a great job of sharing. He lets us know when he doesn't need it. He lets us know when he does need it. We work together to make sure, because he understands that the rentals not only benefit the township, but also the soccer association. So it, it's been great, like for lack of a better way to put it. It's been really good.
Okay, just so the taxpayers aren't on a hook for this whole bill, that's.
No, no, they're not on the hook for the whole bill. In fact, our rental's been going great, but I do want to clear something up because I think it's been kind of hinted at. And while, while I don't want to put the taxpayers on the hook for the, for the whole bill, like we are providing a service to our residents, and they may be our littlest residents and our, our kids that play soccer in the soccer association, or lacrosse, or whatever youth organization. But that, that is kind of the job of the township, is to provide services. And some of those services come in the way of snow removal and garbage removal and things like that. And other services come in the way of providing parks and facilities for the kids. I really try really hard to make sure that there's a good balance, you know, getting grants, funding to pay for stuff where we can, working with beadling to rent out the facility on the off days of soccer association to offset those costs. But there may be minor, and when I say minor, less than $1,000. But there may be minor, and when I say minor, less than a thousand dollars, costs associated with it, but I don't think that will be the case this year. But I, I also don't want people to think that, you know, we're, we're trying to make a profit here. We are not. We are just trying to offset the costs.
Cover our costs, right.
Yeah, yeah, so. Any other questions? I will make sure this gets forward. Dawn has it, too. You were, Dawn was copied on this email. He sent it just this afternoon. So it's not a contract, though, per se. I don't know, you were asking Dawn for a contract. It's literally just, I can show you. It's just like a one sheet paper that lists-
Right.
Like what they do and the cost, and that's it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's exactly what it is, so.
So moved.
So. Seconded?
He-
He moved, he's in a hurry to move on. He said so moved. Is there a second for this?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One nineteen, twenty twenty-three, consider adoption of an ordinance of Cecil Township providing for additions to the agricultural security area of Cecil Township, Washington County, Pennsylvania. This public notice was duly advertised on June twenty-first and June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
I don't, I don't feel, whoa, 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 whoa. I don't feel we should be adopting this at all right now.
The agricultural-
Too many questions.
That's different than what you, are you, is that what you were brought up to me at the beginning?
Pardon me?
Is it different than what you brought up to me at the beginning about the-
No.
House on parcels? No.
Is this as, as far as you want to put another parcel on?
No, no, no.
Another home, another parcel?
No, this is just, and if Jack was here, he could explain it better, but this is just, we have to set agricultural security areas throughout the township per Washington County rules. So this was, this is not related to the multiple parcel thing. That was, that will be part of the zoning meeting on August fourteenth.
It's just the general ordinance.
Yes.
Yes.
This is just like a requirement of Washington County. Do you want, do you want me to have Jack come out and explain it?
Oh, yeah.
I, I'm not the best at explaining this one.
Pardon me?
I'm not the best at explaining this one. We just, we are required to keep certain areas-
Agriculture.
Correct.
Right.
Per Washington County. So we had to set those areas and define it with this ordinance. Oh, here he comes.
I think you worked quite a bit on that.
Yeah. Can you very quickly explain the agricultural security area? Thanks, Jack. Don't worry about this. As long as we're recording, that's fine. Yeah, don't worry about it.
The Cecil Township Agricultural Security Zone is separate from anything else we have, in that landowners can sign up for it, and they can ask to be released from it. It is a condition that attaches to the property, not to the owner, and it prevents things like eminent domain, or at least slows them down, plus a couple other perks. Basically, the A. S. A. is designed to maintain the sanctity, if you will, of farm, farmland in Cecil Township.
Is there a tax, there's a tax abatement associated with that? No, it's-
There is nothing tax attached to the A. S. A. That would be-
Clean and green.
Clean and green only.
Okay, okay, makes sense. Any other questions by the board? I'm sorry, I forget. Do we have a motion on this?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One twenty, twenty twenty-three, consider the Board of Supervisors minutes from the Monday, June fifth, twenty twenty-three, regular monthly meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes five zero. One twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, consider the general fund invoices from June first through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we have two things we need to add to the agenda. One is this Klinger Park. So I'm gonna take a vote to, to make that second payment of three thousand. So we have to vote to add it to the agenda, and then add it to the agenda. All those in, can I have a motion to, to authorize us to pay Fairfield Landscaping the amount of three thousand, one hundred thirty-five dollars for the July fifth treatment at Klinger Park? Do I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now we need to actually take a vote on allowing it to be paid. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero.
Cindy.
Hang on one second.
Are they gonna do anything about the fields-
Oh, sorry.
That they burnt real bad?
They burnt?
Bill brought it to my attention.
So what fields got burnt?
Some fields got burned? He said some fields got burned.
They over fertilized or something?
No, no, that's, that was just from lack of sun. It's green again.
You mean lack of rain?
I mean, lack of rain.
Yeah, too much sun, lack of rain.
No, no, the, uh, Klinger Park, all the parks were, were starting yellow, as well as my yard, but, uh, yeah, they're back green again. Lack of rain. So, yeah, they look good.
Yeah, there's no access to water up there right now. Yeah, they, they do look good. I'll ask him about that when I, when we send him an email, and just make sure that it, because of the lack of rain, that we were putting this stuff on now wouldn't cause a problem, because I think we're gonna head into a drier period right now. And then the second one, we're, I'm gonna read this. We have to vote to actually add it to the agenda. Oops, I forgot to add public comment. Did anybody have public comment on the Klinger one? So this would be one twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, so we're gonna consider approving the request of Timothy Thornton of two twenty-eight Railroad Street, McDonald, P. A., to tap into the McDonald Borough Sanitary Sewer System contingent upon receipt of the required approvals to make the connection. I need a motion to add this to the agenda.
So moved.
And seconded. It's removed and seconded. All those in favor of adding this to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And then we need to actually take a vote. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
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 Passes five zero. Just let us know. You can reach out to our township manager if you need anything more from us in order, like a letter or something, in order to help you facilitate moving that forward. No problem. Quickly, before we move on to citizens' comments, for those of you that didn't get the opportunity to see the Muse fireworks last night, even though they were cut a little bit short, they were still absolutely phenomenal. My daughter was squealing in my ear the entire time. It was super cute. For those of you that don't know, we ha, we donate some money to help him out with that, and it is worth every penny and more. So thank you to Fireworks Joe for doing that every year for us. It brings people from all over, not just Muse and Cecil, so awesome, awesome job last night. I'm gonna open it up now for citizens' comment, general comments and questions. So if you have a question about something that wasn't on the agenda, or just want to ask us something, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
I think it was Ron Dadovich, one eight zero Liberty Boulevard, Cannonsburg, in the Traditions of America Soft Point Plan. The questions I, the thing why I might bring to the attention of the, of the board is the, it says, a little bit of a safety hazard where you're coming across the bridge over the tracks and heading towards West McMurray. This is the, the first picture I have up here is taken from, uh, out my front window of the car, where you're approaching the bridge, and there's no, there's no sight, blind sight coming up to that corner or coming from the other way. So, you know, depending on how fast and how big a vehicle is coming around that corner, there's been some near misses in one, on, you know, different people, including myself. So that's one, one item there. Now, you're coming from the, you're from the T. O. A. side, going towards West McMurray. Again, you can see as you're coming towards that corner, there's a, it's a sharp corner there coming out, and I bring attention to this area right here, that's open ground here, and they had to really make a sharp angle with that guide rail. I've, you know, discussed the idea, if that, if they could just move this, this pole back into that open ground and open up this curve here into the, on that road, it could be a little, in other words, you're coming around with a little less trying to make that, that turn there, and then, yeah, the next one. If you, before you go there, if you look right here, there's this guide rail here that, and this thing that blocks the view, and then this guide rail protrudes out a little bit, and that's why you need some relief on this side. Go back to the next one where I'll just show you a little picture of that. We've already had some, you can see here, people scraping against that guide rail already, trying to, you know, keep from getting whacked coming the other way from vehicles. I just want to bring to the board's attention that, you know, as you look for future type of things to mitigate safety issues, particularly in that area, where now you've got a fifty-five-plus community of us drivers who are, three hundred and fifty homes gonna be in there. You know, we're not, our reflexes aren't as quick as they used to be maybe, and so we're kind of a little concerned about what we're anticipating and what we've also experienced there. That's all I want to do, bring it to your attention.
Okay, thank you. The board will ta, will talk to our township engineer and, and see if there's anything at all we can do.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general township comments or questions?
Hello, my name's Jeff Pats, eleven Walnut Street, and I wanted to bring the board's attention about the noise ordinance and Tornay's Pub and Grub outdoor venue. What's gonna be done to enforce this?
I mean, we are enforcing our noise ordinance. We-
I get conflicting stories from different people I talk to in the township. What is the noise ordinance?
Seven A. M. to seven P. M. is our, is our noise ordinance.
Okay. Were there any special permits issued to them?
Not by the township. I mean, they would have had to have gotten permits from the Liquor Control Board.
Uh, the, the law on the Liquor Control Board is seventy-five D. B. at the property line. So who do we call to enforce this? Local police or state?
You'll need to call the Liquor Control Board. There, if that's, if you're talking about their specific requirements, you'll need to reach out to them. We can't enforce a permit or a noise issue based on, like, a requirement from another agency.
Well, actually, the Liquor Control Board states that it can be superseded by a township, local township ordinance.
But we don't, but in our noise ordinance, we don't ha, it doesn't say seventy-five D. B. I was actually just looking at this today.
And that's only for construction noise, I believe?
Right.
This isn't construction.
Correct. So unfortunately, if you're at, we, we can't, and I, again, our chief of police is not here today, but I did talk to him about that, too. If you're asking for enforcement of a rule set by the Liquor Control Board, you have to reach out to them in order for them. We can't enforce the Liquor Control Board's law. They have their own agents that will come out. I actually researched this today, and they will investigate it should they need to, but we, as a township, can't do that. We can enforce our own ordinances, so we can enforce, you know, our own noise ordinance, but we can't enforce, and our noise ordinance, to be frank, doesn't specifically address it.
So there's nothing you can do for the peaceful enjoyment of my property?
I'd like to mention, our chief isn't here right now. I think he, he might have some mechanisms for helping. I mean, just even if it's disturbing the peace, it's, it's, she's right, it's not a construction zoning issue, but there's still, the police do get involved, and there's some of the complaints of disturbing the peace.
Well, don't get me wrong, this is a very respectable place. The customers are very nice. It's just the outdoor venue is excessively loud.
But your complaint is disturbing the peace-
Yes.
-of the neighborhood. So I'm just saying, let's, he'll be back. When he's back, we can address it with him and see if he has some-
He did offer, when I talked to him this afternoon, to meet with you if you would want to.
I do.
And so we can, if you, before you leave, give your information to our township manager, or we can have our, or even me, I can have your, actually have your contact information. We will have your chief of police reach out to you, probably not tomorrow, as it's the Fourth of July, but when he comes back on the fifth, and we can sit down and talk about it. Unfortunately, the issue that we have a little bit is that our, our noise ordinance specifically references construction noise, which is something we've recognized that we need to update our noise ordinance, and it's in the list of ordinances that we are working towards updating, but it hasn't been updated.
That's pretty much what I'm asking for. I'd appreciate any help that you could have.
Yeah, we're happy to do that. So I have your contact information, so I will forward that to our chief of police, and we can sit down and see if there's anything we can do, but we can only enforce the ordinances that we have, and, and if you need somebody else to enforce their own rules, then you would need to reach out to them.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Does it being in that trailer make it a lot louder?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
It does. And fortunately, it plays in the opposite direction of my house, but it's still, it sounds like they're, I'm Star Lake in my backyard, and you can hear it inside my house.
Okay. Like I said, we will, we will be in contact with you to see.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Any board comments or questions? This meeting is adjourned.